Well, we're doing quarter. I believe we have a motion.
I'm making a motion to go into executive session to discuss the position of to discuss the position of residency officer. Thank you.
Yes.
Just for a second.
Okay, and then I need a second. Okay, and so we'll be back.
All those in favor?
All those in favor. Sorry. Okay, ready?
To open our public session from our executive session where we had a meeting with our attorneys to discuss the personnel matter. And so you have a motion for that. Carrie, in a second. Danny, and all those in favor? I thought we're five right now. Five, zero. Thank you. Okay. And with that note, welcome everyone. Here, I'd like to start with the pledge and with our students.
To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we start tonight with our administrator remarks. I'm excited. Michelle will come out and add it.
My first and last.
So Ms. Gosh, do you want to start us off?
Yes, please. Good evening. I just want to highlight two exciting professional learning opportunities this week. Yesterday, we were finally able to reschedule our project slides from the Buck Institute. This was tornadoed out last May. So the Buck Institute provides high-quality professional learning in terms of project-based learning. So what this particular project slide, the idea is that it allows the participants to experience what a project-based learning unit would look like as a student. So this particular slide is called Making Space for Change. And the charge that the facilitator gave to us was how do we alter a public space to promote social change, for social good? So teachers and administrators problem-solved, came up with multiple iterations of designs based on themes such as sustainability and health and wellness and civic engagement. So we were excited to experience it. And this is part, a small part of a larger project-based learning effort, which has come up in multiple professional learning surveys and through multiple feedback loops as an area that teachers would like to engage in further. So we were happy to take part in that yesterday. And also, we have two Word Study sessions this week. We had one today at JFK, another one at CB Star. On Thursday with Dr. Marlon Nessie, the former professor and also locally known as a guru in Word Study. These sessions were targeted to the specific needs of each building in order to help further promote our Word Study K-5. We made sure that we staggered the sessions so the teachers could either come before or after school. And I just want to thank the Word Study task force who helped inform what these sessions would look like and give really specific ideas about what the teachers would have to move on.
Thank you. Mr. Carlson?
Good evening. This past Tuesday, November 20th, we had our first Budget 101 workshop over at the high school, the ILC. I put up on the board the website that we've created for all of the Budget 101s for the community to use as a resource. We have a Q and A from that evening. We also have the actual presentation itself as a YouTube and also a copy of the presentation. We're going to have a series of Budget 101 workshops that we talked about. We put together the budget development calendar. Our next Budget 101 workshop is on Wednesday, December 12th, at 6:30 over at the high school at the ILC. We'll be talking about salaries and benefits. We're also going to be trying to put together a budget advisory committee. We sent out a backpack about a week ago. We'll continue to send backpacks out to solicit membership for the budget advisory committee. Some budget news. So budget news has been continuing to trickle in slowly. Just this afternoon, we were able to confirm some extremely, extremely encouraging budget news. The tax-based growth factor, which is a component of the tax cap, was released this afternoon by the New York State Department of Tax and Finance. And they released a tax-based growth factor that increased significantly in Brewster. And what the growth factor is, it's a measure of the changes in assessment from additions or new construction. And just to put it in dollar terms, had we received this same increase in the 17, excuse me, the 1819 budget that we're currently in, it would have resulted in additional revenue of $791,000 on our tax levy. So it's an incredible increase in next year's levy, but it's going to be somewhat of a gift and a curse because we're likely going to have a very large tax cap figure next year. The benefit is it's due to one significant building addition or a new building having to do with the Algonquin Gas Line in the town of Southeast. So that property is going to be footing the bill for the majority of our tax levy increase next year. So it's very good news, but it's certainly going to need some explaining when we get into the budget season because in my estimation, our tax levy increase and our tax cap increase is probably going to be somewhat higher than our neighbors'. But it certainly has an explanation, and it's a good thing. It's a good thing for the district. And again, had we received that this year, it would have resulted in $791,000 of additional revenue. So I'm very encouraged of the prospects of next year's budget. And that's my comments for this evening.
Sure. A couple of exciting things that our students are involved in. We have four students who were part of the commencement, the 31st commencement of the youth court, which is a Putnam County endeavor to have some lower offenses that are committed by young people actually adjudicated by their peers, which is pretty cool. So Sean Carlin, Francesca Trengat, Stephen and Victoria Kowaleski were among the four students in Brewster who were a part of that youth court. So congratulations to them. We also have one of our students, wonderful athlete Megan Beal, who signed a letter of intent to play lacrosse and study neuroscience on her free time at Furman University in September. So congratulations to Megan. And congratulations to the staff members who are receiving the recognition. It's awesome, the work that you've been doing, and it gives us very dear pride to be able to make presentations to you this afternoon, I mean, in a little while. And the Festival of Cultures, which was scheduled for this Thursday, has been rescheduled to May 3rd in the spring. So more information will be provided about that. So, thank you.
Okay, so I have a few updates. Oh, I'm sorry. Shoot. I almost have this down. I almost have it down. No, I'm next. I am next. We'll get it right. It's a new show on the road here. All right, so my comment. Yes. So we have, oh, okay, so we had our C-19 meeting this month, and the focus was on K-12 science. And I thought it was a productive meeting. I thought everyone had an opportunity to share and be heard, talk about the strengths and the districts, as well as the areas that need to focus for us. And also what came out of that was Michelle talked about putting together a task force for discussion on how to focus more on the science K-12. We have, you know, state requirements and things to meet. We want to decide how it's going to look and vision for it and have, you know, employees part of the committee and staff in having that discussion. So I don't have any other, we're not there yet. We're going to put out.
Put out a letter to the community asking for parents, volunteers, as well as student volunteers to serve on the task force.
As well. Okay, so that'll be out there. And the second thing is, we're going to put together the board. We'll be putting out a letter to the community about the superintendent interview committee process. We're going to finalize some dates, and we'll put a letter out soon as to how we're going to coordinate that effort. So that'll be coming soon. Budget 101, I also, I want to say thank you. I went through all of it. I wasn't able to make the meeting last minute, but it was very thorough and very informative even for me hearing it so many times. So, I mean, I really encourage everyone to take a look and get involved. I know it's something new we're doing this year, so I think there might be a little bit of a, I don't know what to call it, but a kind of a delay in getting it kind of rolling up everything out there. But I do encourage the community to come, get involved, come to the Budget 101 meetings, as well as, you know, participate in the advisory committee. Our effort is to, you know, not end up in March and everyone just be kind of figuring it all out last minute. We really want the community to understand, you know, how we're getting to that point in the part of the process. And the next meeting will be December 12th. So I did have a question. Is there a, do we have a cap, or is it just open the advisory committee? Do we decide on?
We have membership. So we have an item on the agenda to actually explain what a budget advisory charter looks like. And it describes how that group is constituted. So it's a combination of board, bargaining unit, community involvement.
Okay, so with the first meeting for that, December 12th, we probably should kind of set out a final reminder and to get it really in place. Okay.
I think you already sent something out.
One thing.
I did, but I'll send out another.
And just maybe with a deadline, since we need to. And the last thing, I have a statement and a question. So my recollection is that we have NISBA coming in on Thursday. Is that still happening? The 29th? I thought I saw an email somewhere about the, oh gosh, I'm forgetting. What's our mindful room called?
Oh, yes. They're coming to interview the educators and students about the mindful moment.
Yeah, so that's this Thursday, which is really great because NISBA, I don't know if they've come into our district.
Not ever.
Ever. So that's huge. And I actually was wondering, and I don't know, because I don't know if they're focused on one thing at a time, but since we have them, maybe we can also point out, we just did the, I forget, that's called the Bubbles.
Bubbly, the bubbly.
Yeah, I mean, that's another phenomenal thing. If they have spare time, maybe we can redirect a couple of other things that we're doing in our district. Because I just want to take advantage of having them here.
Yeah, I think that, pardon me, Jennifer Gary has been producing a lot of content. I mean, and some of what we saw in our Inside Brewster, which is our first newsletter, that was part of our service with, probably Northern Westchester Bosse's, which was distributed. So she's using this venue as well as other news releases to contact organizations that have a larger reach across the state to let them know. So I'm sure that she's also promoting that one. But we'll certainly, we'll direct them if we can.
Yeah, that's just such a, it's a great thing. I always hate going to the conventions and every other, like, send everybody. There's a lot of districts that are just there, and I'm like, it's got to be us. So that's it for me for right now. And now our senior presentations. Please.
There's a lot of updates. The Mr. Brewster Interest Meeting was today after school, and the guys running are starting to get donations to help find a cure for cystic fibrosis. The Mamma Mia Interest Meeting is after school Thursday for those interested in auditioning for the Spring Musical. NHS raised $700 for the families in need for Thanksgiving. Habitat for Humanity is having their annual poinsettia sale. The Putnam County Sheriff's Office will be accepting unwrapped gifts to benefit local children through the Toys for Tots program. Last year, the donations from Brewster High School was a great show of support for our community members, and we would like to do the same this year. You can drop off your donation in the main office starting Monday, November 26th until December 13. The Ferris Fats newspaper came out on Monday. The National Art Honor Society is having their annual holiday card and art fair December 11th to the 17th, and their proceeds are going to the California Wildfire and to fund their spring art music trip. Science Honor Society is putting up their giving tree. Meal Potato is starting their annual adopt a family. Honors are where math honor society students donate presents for the holidays for families in need. The day of service is December 7th, when we go to JFK and CB Star and do some activities with the young kids in honor of the Sandy Hook shooting. And I'm holding the hopeful, the first annual convention to raise awareness for the homeless population in Brewster on December 11th. We're all great. It's our sign up to participate.
Okay, now we move on to our presentations, recognition discussion. And first up is a construction update. KG and D Architects, Mr. Riley, welcome.
I'm Joe Riley from KG and D Architects. The construction update is about the Fields project, and the update is not wonderful because the weather has really stomped on us this fall. There's not a lot of work that has really been accomplished over the last five weeks. Only to the rainy weather and the water that stays in the ground. So there have been a few full workdays done. The drainage is in place at the baseball field. The softball fields are ready for the sod, except for the final grading. We are recommending to the district and to the contractor that that sod not go down until the spring because it's too late in the year now. And it is, we're not close to being able to work out there with the amount of water that's in the ground. With luck, the rough grading of the baseball field will get done before winter is upon us, so that both fields will be ready for sod as soon as the weather breaks in the spring. But that's where we are now. We've been scanning and arraying for a while.
Okay, thank you.
Joe, so with the move to sod from seed, how much time did that save us, you know, on the back end, looking at, you know, spring of 2019?
Spring of 2019, the move from seed to sod, when we made it, was a positive move. And we would have been able to get out of the field in the late spring if we had been able to get the sod down in that September 15th, September 30th window. The weather prevented us from getting to that point. So we are going to have to have the whole spring for that sod to take and be a playable surface.
So does that mean that the field's not usable in the spring season?
It is very unlikely that the field will be usable in the spring season. If the weather's very favorable, you'll get on there in the late spring, but, you know, everything would have to break right for that to happen. It should not be planned for or expected that they will be used.
We had a athletic field renovation committee meeting this afternoon at 4 o'clock, freezing out on a field, walking to look at the progress. And we took a look back, or at least I did, in advance of that meeting, to the last time we met, which was back in June. And at that point, our hope was that we'd be able to use the fields in May, if at all. But, you know, with that meeting even back in June, when the construction even began, Joe and John Watson from Inside Engineering made sure to stress the weather as being the biggest variable on all this. And I think everyone is aware of what we were up against this summer with the amount of rain that we got into the fall. So it certainly didn't cooperate with us in a site work project when we're trying to push dirt around and we can't push mud around. So with the move to sod, our hope was that we'd be able to still stay on that schedule and possibly have a home game or two, you know, in late May. But at this point, it seems like the architects and engineers are recommending that we do what is most prudent for the success of this field for the, you know, for the long haul and hold off for another season. Thank you, Joe.
So Victor, I assume that we have the contingency plan of using the field this last year. Have it secured. I don't see Dean here, so.
Mr. Barra is here. He's already reached out to Southeast.
Yep.
And also coordinated with the coaches to make sure that any changes that they're recommending, any other sites that we certainly employ now. Dean, do you want to add anything to that?
I mean, the schedule just came out the other day. So we will, you know, first of all, we reached out to the town of Southeast already, and we're going to reject Mr. Hay. We don't anticipate any problems. Everything is very well organized, and we were treated very well last year. And we'll look to see where the schedule lies. Like I said, it just came out. And we'll move as many games possible to later on. Like, if we're scheduled to play home earlier, we'll go later, just with the hope of possibly playing on the field if everything breaks right.
Thank you. I mean, it's not ideal, but I guess if it's now, it lasts us a long time. We have to take, you know, those steps. So, thank you. Okay. So now we move on to NJ ROTC Commander Earl's presentation. Earl, and Ms. Portler, you'll just come up so we can just recognize you for your outstanding contributions to our school district. I'd like to create a certificate here for Brewster Central School District.
I'm sorry, one more.
Oh, Danny, come on up. Recognition Commander H. Earl. Recognition, no. In recognition of your contribution to the district as an outstanding educator and role model for the students of the Brewster High School, NJ ROTC program.
You might as well stay.
Now, recognition of Andrea Pradeco, sorry, everyone, and Alex Seriani for The Letters. So I will read this. Alex, Brewster Central School District Certificate of Recognition, Alex Seriani, in recognition of your contribution to the district as the director for the outstanding production of the 2018 fall drama, The Letters. Brewster Central School District Certificate of Recognition, Andrea Pradeco.
Pradeco.
I'm sorry. In recognition of your contribution to the district as the co-creator and producer for the outstanding production of the 2018 fall drama, The Letters. And we have recognition of Chris Chierello and.
Elka Ryman.
Mary Munro. Brewster Central School District Certificate of Recognition, Chris Chierello, in recognition of his contribution to the district for his skilled craftsmanship in constructing vehicle vacays to honor retired board education president.
Which is in the corner.
I just want to add, this is just one of many, many things that Chris does around the district. His talents are endless, and this is just one example. He's done tremendous things within the school buildings and building display cases and things of that nature. So, Chris, thank you.
Thank you. Brewster Central School District Certificate of Recognition, Elka Ryman. In recognition of her contribution to the district for her courage, competency, and care in safeguarding all of our students on a daily basis. Does anyone want to add anything else? I mean, other than, you know, thank you so much. It's great that we have this opportunity to honor, you know, the great work that you've done.
I'll just add that, I'm sure you all read it in the paper, but Elka Ryman, school bus safety is one bus stop at a time. And what Elka did was exactly what you should be doing when you're engaging in a drop-off or a pickup. You should only be focusing on the children that you are dropping off and picking up. And she remained undistracted and saved the lives of three children.
Now we move on to our next item, Innovators Collegial Circle. Yes.
All right, I'd like to welcome Mr. Peter Lamro and Mr. Jim Chalor to help present tonight. There are also a number of teachers who are part of our Innovators Collegial Circle who have some life-changing commitments, very understandable family commitments that aren't unable to be, or can be, we will carry on. But we appreciate the opportunity to speak about what has been for the passion project for a number of us and that exists, Innovators Collegial Circle. So how did we get to this point? One of, there are multiple factors in the forming of this group. The first was our strategic coherence plan. So how are we thinking about what these skills look like in action in the classroom K-12? And how can we make sure that we're sharing those ideas with one another? We also have, you know, in the same vein, this idea of cross-pollination. So we know that great things are happening, right? So how can we make sure that we break down silos and give staff members an opportunity, staff members who are motivated to engage in this sort of work, give them an opportunity to share these ideas across content areas, across grade levels, and across even years of experience. And finally, to be honest, part of this had to do with cost. I was feeling a little bit frugal when I approve all of the final approval for workshops throughout the region. And we have these regional collegial circles, very great. But we really wanted to scale up. So how can we bring that sort of experience where people can just sit down and talk about their practice right here in Brewster? So all those factors together brought us to this point where our group is considered Innovators Collegial Circle. I'm not going to read all these staff members to you, but these are individuals across the district who come together four, five, six times a year to, in an effort to foster and grow our innovation. So our starting point a year and a half ago was to have a common understanding of what innovation is and what it means to us. And what you see over the next few slides is that we pull from the research because this connection between research and practice was really important for us and served as sort of an external check for us to make sure that we were moving in the right direction. So the biggest takeaway personally was, yes, it's great to be creative, but the idea of innovation is converting those ideas into something that is a, as a takeaway, something that can be put into action in order to help students succeed. And what we had talked about doing was really creating a space for staff to be able to come together and provide not just, you know, the physical support, meaning we'll get you a coverage, we'll set up the time, but also the idea that, you know what? You're on the right track. Keep doing what you're doing. You're taking risks, and it's good for kids. Here's, we talked in this book earlier about that, connecting research to practice. Here are some of the ideas that we're pulling from. So the major themes are diversity of experience. It's a really powerful thing when we have staff members who might be in their second year of teaching and staff members who are in 20-plus years of teaching, be able to come together and to say, this is something I tried. Tell me how you think we can improve it. Motivation is another key piece. Creating this internal social network that breaks down the barriers of time and being in different buildings. And really, the bottom line, supporting the professional growth of our staff.
So once we brought the group together, we talked about, after we defined what we really thought we were about and what we were there to discuss and kind of what our goal was, we said, well, what are we going to participate in? What are we going to do to kind of further this work? And we did a few different things. Learning walks throughout the schools. We did that back in January. We did an innovative lesson share, I think, in March. And throughout, we've done a bit of that. And the, just the getting together each time and sharing some of the practices that we were doing really is that support network of those doing other innovative work and what is it? And what does it look like in an English classroom or a science classroom or social studies classroom? Really broadening our perspective on what that is. And being able to go into the classroom and really see that work in action was really useful. And then a lot of sharing of best practices, and I'm going to turn it over to Peter Lamro to talk a little bit more about that.
Thanks, sir. So as we work through this innovative collegial circle, there's been a couple of common themes. Those common themes are passion-based learning, project-based learning, and redefining learning spaces. Now, it's been great that we've had a cross-district cohort here. So we have different. Now, it's been great that we've had a cross-district cohort here, so we have different disciplines and different grade levels, so this has really been able to permeate, you know, all four buildings in different ways. So one of the things that we first started with was, you know, as we acquired our one-to-one resources, just being able to define how to best capitalize on that resource to improve learning. That may not seem innovative, but for many people, you know, that's a baseline of getting people up to speed with that, and that was really important. One of the other things we used that came out of this group was the Applied Digital Skills from Google. It's a prepackaged, project-based curriculum that integrates digital learning skills. So you teach, you learn the digital learning tools within the context of a project that they provide in a prepackaged curriculum. We looked at the expedition, the augmented and virtual reality system that we have in both CB Star and Wells to provide immersive experiences for students. And then this is what Passion Projects that I had for students. So Passion Projects come in a variety of different forms, so some people call them Genius Hour, where you dedicate an hour a week or an hour for students to do work that they're passionate about or interested in. I call mine Passion Projects, other people in the district call them Twenty Time Projects. So they go by different names. This is actually a picture from a project that's due tomorrow that you might look familiar a bit. So another Twenty Time Project that was a great project last year, Ms. Greenfeld in her Project Leading Way Engineering class, hers, she gave her engineering students Twenty Time in which they helped to redesign tools for our Life Skills students who went and worked at Green Chimney. So, you know, this is a really valuable pairing. And again, that's one of the Twenty Time examples. So, you know, she's also working to redefine the learning space, as is Mr. Yur. So Mr. Yur has, you know, redefined the learning space in a maker space for the humanities, which is kind of, you know, breaks the traditional mold of maker space. So, you know, those are some of the valuable practices we've gotten from the collegial circles here.
The next two examples are elementary examples. This one is from a first-grade classroom with Mrs. Liz Ambusi. What these students had to do are, these are two challenges. One, they had to build a tower with index cards, tape, and scissors. A second challenge was them to build a different tower with many marshmallows, twist ties, and straws. So what is really valuable in this sort of experience is that, so students look at it, they problem solve, they create their first version, and then they stop, and they walk around the room, and they see what other students have done, they see what learned, what worked, what didn't work, and then they go back and iterate again to create or improve on their original designs. So something that Liz stresses is if they weren't able to actually fulfill the challenge, they were able to know that what didn't work, right? And so the next time, they would take that knowledge and it would inform their practices. This is Juliana Tangredi and Stephanie Del Martin's fifth-grade class. Here are some examples of tools that they use in order to further engage students. One example is CSO, which is an online program with activities designed by teachers that help students see math as more of a gaming approach than as, you know, the rote memorization that we traditionally have our community experienced ourselves as students. So the whole idea is that these groups of people get together, they share some ideas, they share those ideas with others, they take away ideas and try those in their classrooms. Then through these variety of activities, through learning walks, through looking at professional literature, and really just having time to talk to one another, we see student engagement improve.
So a lot of this, in order for this work to happen, there has to be a lot of things in place for teachers and for students. And the digital, so there's a lot of things going on to support some of this innovation. The Digital Learning Committee really set forth a vision that focused on having all learners design and answer their own questions in the classroom and to use project and problem-based learning to be able to engage and learn. So that's part of some of that process that's going on. The Instructional Technology Specialists, we have one in each building. We used to have one district-wide, and I don't, the reason I leave that up there is because I think Peter was instrumental over the years that he did this in really helping to support the work. And it would be great to see, if the budget turns out, to be able to see that restored, to have that kind of support district-wide. Just the technology, having reliable infrastructure, I know that that's, you know, five years ago, that was not the case, and teachers would be reluctant to undertake this kind of work and not knowing where the technology might lead them, whether they might be able to do or not do. The collaboration tools, having the devices in your hands, having the Google Apps available, that they can collaborate with their other classmates and with the teachers anytime. Creativity software, being able to make that available and doing so, as I mentioned before, about through VDI, being able to allow that kind of Adobe Creative Suite on their Chromebooks, those kind of things that we've been able to. And as Michelle had pointed out, the, you know, having the time built in to be able to pull out of the classroom, the sit and talk about it through professional learning time. And be able to have the opportunity to share these best practices, I think is really valuable in supporting it. So kind of our next steps is what we're looking to do throughout this year is to really expand our circle, get other educators involved, support the decisions that support that innovation, whether it's decisions about professional learning and the learning strands that we've engaged in this year, different purchasing decisions that will help to support that, programming, scheduling, all of those factor into how we can actually do that kind of work in the classroom. And to celebrate some innovative practices. One thing that has kind of been percolating that I wanted to throw out there is the idea of an innovation challenge for students that's outside of the classroom, that any student, they wouldn't have to be taking a class, but kind of a shark tank, what students asking the question of what problem do they want to solve? What question do they want to answer? And having them propose things to, say, a district and community board to maybe have funding for their ideas to make those happen. So something, you know, the ideas that we're kind of percolating to say, hey, let's take this to the next level and bring it outside of the classroom and directly to the students. Thank you for the opportunity to present and talk.
Questions?
So in expanding the circle.
We joked today about how we have rolling a mission. You know, anybody who wants to join can, and that's part of, maybe our next meeting can talk about how we can recruit additional, additional people. Rebecca Archer actually joined last year, and it was a great addition. You know what she has done with the Mindful Moment Room, and now she's brought mindfulness into the PD curriculum as well. So we are open to anyone who wishes to expand.
Can I also say personally, you know, as we interact with the different peers in the different buildings, you know, these ideas start to spread organically. You know, some of the things that we've taken from ICC are going to the rest of the Science Department currently. So, you know, I think it's just, if you get a good representation of people, you know, that then automatically percolates out.
Any chance for students to be involved?
Well, I think it was Laura Mottin. If you look at the opening graphic, you really have to do this for all the transition points. The opening graphic, actually, which we have used in several presentations, including in our CS for All work, this was done by two high school students. It was law school. Yep, animated. So yes, they would be a whole addition.
Thank you. Next, we have to go again. So next, we have our K-5 Report Card Update.
Okay, great, thank you. What I hope to do tonight is provide a very brief overview about the initiatives that we have made over the last few months as our K-5 Report Card Committee. So I'd like to thank these committee members for what was serious work and their contribution in getting us to this point. The reward for these significant contributions is that they don't have to be here tonight. So I'm going to invite them, even though a number of them will show up, and they have put in an considerable amount of time to get us up to this point. But what I hope you'll see is across the two schools, we have some solid representation in terms of roles and student constituent groups that they have been represented. So why are we, why are we doing this? This conversation is not new. It was work that began several years ago when we introduced Teachers College as K-5, and at that time, the decision was made to wait. So we are now at the point where it's time to restart that. As you know, SCP drives everything that we do, and as a system, we now know the skills that we want to foster. So how is that reflected in our grading system? And it was interesting in the conversations that we've had since the summer with this group, how organic that came up. It wasn't, you know, the administrators pushing certain things. They say, you know, we haven't really talked about perseverance enough, or what rubrics are we using for this or that skill? It was really rewarding to see. As we mentioned last night at C-19, in terms of science, there are changing standards. We know that there are also changing standards for ELA and math, as well as any framework for social studies. So we're starting, the idea is to start to prime the system, to think about what those new standards could mean in terms of how we report out student progress. And, you know, it's interesting, I couldn't really, we couldn't really have a discussion about curriculum instruction or assessment without teachers saying to me at the K-5 level, you know, we really need to get back to those report cards this time, that we're not, we can do better in reporting this. And I think you see from the number of teachers who volunteered to be on this committee just how serious that commitment was. So our plan for this year, it's a very short-term mission for 2018-19. We want to make sure that we're more aligned K-5. And some of the examples that I'll show you, you'll see how there was some misalignment. We want to make sure that we give more specifics about student progress. If you have a son or daughter in either CB Star or JFK, you probably remember getting a lot of comments, or in length the narrative for different subject areas was very, very long. What we hope to be able to do with this is because we've given more indicators and more specifics about where students should be by different trimesters, it should cut down on the need for that length of narrative, but still give very accurate and detailed information about student progress. And, you know, accuracy was a big thing for us, too. Now that we're in year four of TC, we need to make sure that what we're saying to students on a daily basis and what we're assessing ends up being what is reported out in terms of our K-5 system. In 2019, 2020, we know it's a whole different ballgame. So we have, you know, we have achieved 18-19, we're ready to go in terms of these short-term changes, but in 2019, 2020, we know that we need to sort of throw off the change and really just think about not what we have currently, but what we want, what we want things to look like. And that will be a very intensive and possibly multi-year process as well to make sure that we do that right. So this first part, short-term, and now, once we come back from the holiday break, we will get into revisioning 19, 20, and beyond. If you have a son or daughter in JFK or CB Star, you probably, I hopefully saw the call for feedback. So we sent out a parent survey. We also sent out a staff survey, and we asked members or representatives of the K-5 committee to have informal and formal conversations with their grade level or content areas. And we were able to distill this down into really these four categories, which luckily matches what we had set out for in the beginning in terms of our objectives. All right, so here's some examples. We'll talk about it in the abstract anymore. One of the big things was just to streamline some of it. If you see in the 17-18 example for writing, under Rights Legible, you'll see 1-16, 1-18. I was afraid to ask this question, but I had to ask, what does it mean? It's not a standard. It's just something with our local reporting system. We ask, can we erase that? We can. So now it's not going to be as confusing, it's more streamlined, and parents can focus on what we are asking, or what is important or essential. The second thing that we did, and this was at our very first meeting in August, is we said, okay, if we want to talk about coherence and alignment K-5, we need to buy into this idea of the 1 through 4 reporting system, and we need to also talk about what those headings look like. So the first two lines from last year, see that JFK and CB Star had different reporting systems, which is fine, but we're in a different place now as a system. In 18-19, this will be this 1 through 4 grading system that will be what pretty much all content areas use K-5, with the exception of fourth and fifth grade math and two special areas, again, K-5, they're consistent K-5, but two special areas who developmentally have, we've agreed that at this point it's best for students to developmentally have comments, not necessarily these ratings. So that's another example. Here, we wanted to make sure we had more detail in the indicators. So in the past, this is an example of fourth grade science. You see that there were, you know, a number of grades, what you would typically see up to 100. Here, there's a little bit more detail. What do we mean in terms of science? So these three indicators give a little bit more detail without being overtaxing on the teacher. They're still able to communicate the key or essential learnings. Something else that we talked about as almost a value statement as the committee was the idea of effort. We want to make sure that we communicate for every single subject area how much effort a student is putting into that particular subject area. Because we know if a student's doing well on the other indicators and their efforts or vice versa, you know, that would be a very different conversation as a parent that you would have with your son or daughter. So those are just the highlights of some of the big changes. There are more specific changes by grade level, and I'll get to how we're going to communicate that in a minute. But just again, to restate, for 19, 20, we are going to think about completely revisiting this. We don't want to be constrained by our current system and structure, and we are going to start with our philosophy and then work back from there. What we will be doing, and what will be released to parents by the time the report cards go out at the end of next week, is a letter that highlights the changes, just summarizes in brief form, but we'll also have a grade-by-grade guide that will be available. So be able to show them what the previous report card looked like, what the new report cards look like, so that they have a comparison. We'll also have links to standards, although the whole thing is not standard-based, but we'll have a link where it's applicable, and any other relevant information that we think would be helpful in parents digesting this information. One of the other things that we have talked about is we have some upcoming SCP forums. So we will, in that letter, talk about when those forums will be and how parents can come and get more information face-to-face about what the report cards are trying to look like.
Any questions? Yes.
What's the thought process behind going away from a number, an 89, for example, in favor of a 3? In terms of how that provides more detail to a parent?
So if, the part of what the committee discussed is, you know, the developmental stage of that particular student, right? If we give a single numerical grade that goes up to 100, let's say, that gives, I guess, an overall picture, but the value would be in those subcomponents, because at this point, we're building foundations for students to reach certain standards or exit outcomes by the time they leave that particular grade level. So the first idea is that it would be more detailed. We wouldn't have a single, you know, let's say, science, you get a 3, you know, as opposed to an 81. Instead, there is more specific detail that's built out into it.
So you get a 3, and then there's detail specific to your child?
Yes, and for each of the indicators that you have, there would be, like for science, for example, instead of getting this 90, being worked productively with peers would be a 3. Effort in this case would be a 3. Correct. So the sub-indicators within science and sort of the practices, as well as the content standards, for lack of a better word, would be more clearly set out.
Michelle, you said there were two special areas that were going to be separate from this format?
Yes.
Because they needed more commentary. What were those two areas?
Those were library and art. And what they decided is that they didn't want to give a single rating, because a student might not be a great artist, but might be someone that makes the classroom environment a better place. Or they wanted more flexibility in the narrative portion in order to show the holistic traits of a student. And they also wanted to make sure that they didn't deter students from, that agreed... And they also wanted to make sure that they didn't deter students from, that agreed, which they would be then saying is, a student could internalize as almost a value judgment on their ability, right? And how that might impact their thinking as an artist moving forward, let's say, or as a reader for the library.
No, it makes sense. And why wouldn't some of the other special areas be included in that?
So what I learned throughout this process is that it was more difficult than I thought. Because when you talk about assessment, you're really talking about people's philosophy, right? And so it wasn't always, everyone, of course, is very professional and collegial, but it wasn't always an easy conversation. And we knew that for this particular year, what our objective was, was to get to a point where we wanted to move forward. It wasn't going to be perfect, but it was going to be better. And so we gave a lot of flexibility to the teachers in those grade levels and those content areas to share what they felt would be best based on their experience and their, you know, particular content area. So I think, you know, we gave a large degree of latitude because, well, we value the opinions of our professionals, of course. But also because we knew that whatever we were doing was going to be better and what we had, and we're moving in the right direction and getting people to think.
Okay, so now we move on to our action items. And this is where, for this section only, for, let's see, there's 13 items. Our action items. Good evening. If anyone wants to, has any comment you'd like to make before we go into our board discussion for the following action items, you may approach the podium and address the board. You will have two minutes. Please.
Evening. I just wanted to put a little bit out to be. We had spoke about the school counselors and the psychologists in particular last week. And I know we're going to have to do this eventually. And I know maybe if we do it now, we get a better pool of applicants. And I just wondered, in my opinion, this is something we need to do immediately. You know, these are our kids, and everybody has kids that are in pain, or there's a problem, or there's, you know, everybody has a story. You know, the sooner we get them help, the better off it'll be from the school, district, across the board. I know it's a money issue, as everything is, but it is some way we can look into it now. You know, I feel that this is one of the things where we, this is how much it costs. Now let's find the money, but let's get this to the kids as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity for letting me address the board. Just like to bring up, there are 14 members of our Administrators Association in Brewster. And these are the building-level leaders who really do the day-in, day-out jobs throughout the schools. And one of our positions is that of the athletic director, which is on the agenda tonight. Just want to point to the board that the position of the athletic director has changed dramatically over the last five years. And the workload has increased tremendously. And there are many times Dean is needed in two places. And he needs to be in two places at once. And that hinders his ability to communicate among his many constituents. The athletic director not only coordinates the athletic programs for our interscholastic teams. The director coordinates the physical education and health education curriculum throughout the district from K through 12th grade. This includes observing teachers in both classrooms and gyms, which means he has to observe for the APPR observation process. And that includes a pre-observation meeting, a post-observation meeting, along with conducting those observations and then writing reports. He has a very long workday. Unlike all of us, he comes in during the school day at a regular time. But he's also here late into the evenings. And sometimes on Saturdays and weekends as well. Now, all of the other administrative levels in our district have an assistant level. That means all the principals have assistants. We also have guidance counselors and school psychologists and social workers at our disposal when we need assistance. PPS also has an assistant level, and so does technology. Our athletic director is the only one that doesn't have this, yet he spreads so thin across. And it's not about Dean, you know, as a member of the Administrators Association. It's about the position. And we'd like you to think about that as we go along. I'd like to also present two others who would like to speak on behalf of us.
Hi, my name's Ed Morwell. I'm a 6th grade math teacher and a varsity football coach. It's my 33rd year here at Brewster. And I know what you're thinking, "I'm so young-looking." I know, it's true. I'm actually older than Mr. Heinze, if that's possible. I would be great for something. I can tell you that this is a position I think will benefit the coaches and the kids. You know, when you're first hired as a coach, 20, 30 years ago, you were hired at a lower level. You came in as a freshman coach or JV coach. You slowly moved your way up. But in front of you were aged coaches who could help you. They could be your mentor, they could show you the ropes a little bit. As time went on, it got harder and harder to find coaches. We started hiring younger and younger coaches, and they're jumping right into varsity positions. It's a very tough spot to put them in. You know, this position could free up our athletic director or the other athletic director. They could kind of now show up in practices, mentor our younger coaches a little bit more often. Just a quick example of varsity football this year. My two JV coaches this year, one was an assistant for me, a volunteer assistant for two years. The other came right out of college. While my practice is going on, I don't get a chance to see their practice. You know, this is an opportunity for our AD to do that. Another reason, I go to other schools, you know, for 33 years now, I've been doing this. I've probably been to every school in Section 1. When you show up at a school that has some of these positions, you know, you get off the bus and right away, "Hey, Coach, how are you? You know, here's your locker room. You know, if you need water or ice, we're going to take care of that." You know, the way they treat you, I think that's what makes people first-class, how you treat other people. These schools kind of have that. You know, you leave, and the first thing I say is, "Wow, you know, they really got it going on. They know how to do this." That's what I want from Brewster. And I want us to be a first-class situation here. I have a lot of pride in what I do here, and we're always trying to get better. And probably the most important reason is, if you don't know this, Dean's been calling the offensive plays on Friday nights, and it hasn't been working.
This is so tough to, I had to script this. I'm going to have to be as comedic as Ed. I'm so mad at you right now. That's not what we had talked about earlier. Well, good evening, I'm Nicole Sweeney. I've been in the district about a little over 10 years, teaching health and phys ed throughout the district. And I appreciate the opportunity for you to hear my experience in the health and phys ed department, and my interest in the need for an assistant director at this time. The Health and PE department is a district-wide department spanning four schools. It's comprised of 14 full-time teachers, and we educate each and every child in the entire district. I'll say that again. Each and every child in the entire district. Doesn't matter their ability. It doesn't matter who they are. We see every kid. We see them. We teach, differentiate, accommodate, translate. And we don't have a department chairperson, nor does any building have a liaison at this time, or as far as I can remember. So Dean has to do that as part of his job duties. We depend on our athletic director for all the news happenings. I'm so nervous, I don't know if I can. All the news happenings, inside information that keep us organized and professional, and keep our kids safe, and ensures that learning is always first. I promise the font is large on this. It's not that lengthy. This summer alone, there were two huge mandates that needed to be enforced in our curriculum. July introduced an amendment to Ed Law 804 that mandates mental health education be taught in our classrooms. We do it already, but now we have to do it even more. Like you said, sir, I agree wholeheartedly. We need the help for our kids, and this is part of it. Again, on Dean's plate at the moment. In August, the social-emotional learning mandate that must be included and rolled out immediately was produced. Fitness testing has swung back on the pendulum, and we need to change how we administer tests so that kids don't feel like failures, but they do see the benefits of being tested and assessed in front of everyone else. So we have to reevaluate how we do that. There's a new CPR mandate that all high school students at the time of commencement are trained in hands-only CPR. This is brand-new. Again, on Dean's plate. Our concussion protocols and return to play has also been changed, most recently. I'm getting cut off. You got my two mags? Oh my gosh, this is really like the Oscars. Can I have another 40 seconds? Real quick, and then wrap it up. Don't get me wrong, these are good things, but they take time. Jeez, foremost, I'm sorry. Dean is a colleague, and we've worked together at the middle school. His focus has always been and still is on the students, and I can say that with certainty, and I would say that in front of anyone who asks. The position to free up the educator in our AD, again, to help mentor us and reach all of our students, not just the athletes. Years ago, I was on the chopping block almost annually. So I understand that money is an issue. I get it more than almost anybody because I was cut back. Health and phys ed was cut back constantly. However, I'm shocked that this isn't already in place. So I think that we need this, I think that our kids need this. I think that for my department, we need this. And I just think that it's a good thing. So I appreciate your time, and thank you for trusting me with your kids. Thanks for the extra time.
And if I may?
My team, you have two seconds. I'm kind, so I'm going to take two seconds. I also am very concerned in favor of the mental health, the counseling. Like this gentleman said, believe me, it could prevent a lot of problems later on. Nobody knows better than my family. So, yeah, from a young age, it could prevent the, you know, substance abuse, and then attempted suicide, suicide, and the whole nine yards. That's it. Told you, it was only going to take two seconds.
Anyone else? Okay, so I will close the public comment for our actions. And we will move on to number one, approval of staffing. 1A, school counselor. 2.5 retired school counselor to serve as the K-12 counseling specialist until the end of this school year. Michelle, sorry. Any comments on that?
The reason it's a 1.0 is because there is an existing 1.0 school counselor at the elementary level who serves as a mental health counselor. So what we're asking for is a 1, an additional 1.0 because the person has to be both assigned at the JFK Elementary School and the CB* Community School. The 2.5 school counselor to serve as the counseling specialist is needed because, along with this mandate, becomes a requirement to establish and oversee an advisory, as well as a K-12 plan, and to make certain that there's coherence and consistency across the standards that have to be implemented. So there needs to be someone outside of that. This can be an existing, I mean, a retired counselor. They wouldn't be one of our current counselors because all of them are really committed to their students right now and would not want to have any disruption in what they're doing. But they certainly would be helping the person who could be brought on, who hopefully is a retired school counselor, to be able to help us to make sure that we have a plan and then therefore complying with the mandate.
Okay, so first, I just need a motion. Kristen, and then Quinn. And now questions or comments from the board?
I have a question as to the advisory committee that has to be put together. Is there any guidance as to who's supposed to be on that committee?
There is. That's a memo that I don't have here, but it's been shared. And it is constituted by existing staff members, you know, teachers, community members. So it's pretty well described in terms of who has to be on that group. And so someone has to make sure that that group is, that advisory is constituted appropriately. And that it meets, it's supposed to meet, you know, I think it's required two times minimally during the year. Which is basically to look at the actual functioning of that advisory, and is it serving the needs of children? Is the program serving the needs of children? Are we following the standards that are outlined for the K-12 counseling program?
And who's charged with putting together the plan?
That person. That 2.5 person would work with that, you know, with the advisory, but would work with the school counselors across the district to develop that plan.
Yeah, I mean, I also read through it. I understood that it was part of that to kind of, the committee to also help create that vision with the help of everyone. So it seems like setting that committee up needs to happen quickly as well. I mean, if we're going to, we know at this moment, but if we're going to go ahead with this, we would need to put that in place, you know, fairly immediately. And I guess to note, it's till the end of the school year to hire someone to help with this organization. I mean, my understanding also was, from what I read, very advantageous, that it should be in place by next, the 19, 20 school year.
That's right.
So, and then I think it allows for some flexibility in still tweaking it, I guess, because they'll be checking in, but we do need to have a game plan. You know, so, yeah. Any other questions?
Valerie, what were the numbers again? Do you have those, JFK and CB*? 717 at CB*, about 670 at JFK. Okay, thank you.
Right, so I think also, I mean, obviously, one person's not managing. It needs to be a collective effort in what the plan is, the teachers and everyone.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess what I'm about to say is going to apply to 1 through 3. I mean, my big, or 1 through 4. You know, it's disconcerting to me that these are outside of the budget and that we are looking to pay for these things out of savings. Because we know what happens when we get into the budget, and now we have to make decisions. And what we've just hired, and I'm just picking it, you know, a 2.5 retired school counselor to serve as the counseling specialist, what we can't, we just hired them, we can't possibly put them up if necessary for, you know, so then it's really, I feel like it's prioritizing when we don't know yet who, what's in the bucket that needs to be prioritized. You know, I don't want to get into budget season and be sitting there saying, "We need to get rid of a math teacher," or, you know, I, that's what makes me concerned is that this, if these are hired, we're not going to turn around in a couple months and consider eliminating them. And then it's really like, I feel like it's putting them in a different bucket that may not be appropriate. So I'm not going to repeat it every time we go through these, but that is one concern.
My other question is, are we able to split them out? For example, and I'm just going to take the first one. If we wanted, if we voted, we vote 1A and then 1B? Or it doesn't have to?
I could, no, we just amend it. Then we just amend the agenda, and then we can approach it further as well.
Or? I'm sorry. No, the other option, too, is, you know, let's say we approved all four hypothetically. These aren't going to be filled tomorrow. I mean, these are going to take some time. I'm assuming it's going to be pretty difficult to maybe get a K-12 director for STEM, or, you know, we're not going to pick people off the trees for these positions. So maybe there's a bit of a rollout with this, with some of these. You know, I personally know how I feel about a few of them in particular. I feel pretty strongly about the counselor and the special ed piece, that those probably need to be on the more immediate side. But that being said, it doesn't mean we're going to get people right off the bat. And I wish Kathy were here, because she'd probably have a better idea of, you know, the pool out there. Well, only then that it certainly is evident that there's a shortage. You know, she reported that, I guess, two board meetings ago that's happening across the state. And, you know, it is a peculiar time to be looking for the position. So, you know, that having been said, but at the same time, you know, there are other districts that will certainly start posting, you know, not December, as early as January, for any vacancies that they have. So it would behoove us to start if this is something that we know, you know, we're going to need. I mean, it's, you know, it's today or another time, but the need is there. And the sooner, you know, the sooner there's an agreement to post these, I think we'll get ahead of our colleagues in other districts who may also be looking for similar positions.
I need something to consider because I agree with your point. You know, we don't know what we're looking at yet. I mean, we're being optimistic that, you know, we're going to have additional funds to work with, but we do need to understand that right now, we do need to pull from savings to make this happen. Talking about number one. So this particular piece, the school counselor, you know, has come down from this date that we need to do this. How we do it is, you know, a bigger discussion. And, you know, perhaps a suggestion could be, you know, that, you know, I don't know, maybe that we don't do the special- know, maybe that we don't do the, uh, the specialist even though it's just to the end of the year. And maybe it's putting everyone else in place and having the committee and then that discussion created, you know, what things look like and what the needs are. I mean, I agree that yes, having someone to help coordinate any effort with any department is truly helpful. Well, in considering cost, maybe we don't start with that right off the bat. You know, I, I already brought this up last time. I, I was, it was kinda shot down from all angles, you know, doing just one for, for K-5. And it was definitely discussed by many that it's, it's not enough and the needs are great. You know, there are, are options still, but we don't know what this whole program looks like yet. We are literally starting from scratch. And, um, you know, if we remove that 2.5 person, then it really would be a group effort with the professionals within the district and the committee to come up with the vision together, um, based on the regs. You know, 2.5 helps facilitate things, K-12, um, but if they don't have it, it's just a group would have to work as a more cohesive unit to really make sure it happens in the meantime.
Which is why I was suggesting that we split. So that we vote 1A, 1B, and do the same thing for 2A, you know, 2A, 2B, you know.
Okay, so we can do that. Glenn, you wanna say something first and we can do that?
No, I'm, I'm fine. I agree with all the points that's being put out there. And also just Diane's piece right now, I think we need to split it out. There's, there's definitely a piece of uncertainty for me that I don't know where we're gonna be in the next year or so, so. To make all these decisions now is kinda, you know, really hard to do.
Okay, so then I just, um, need a motion to amend action item number one to separate them out. Diane and Glenn, thank you. All in favor? 5-0 passes, thank you. So we'll just, um, then take them separately.
Can I ask Victor a question? Victor, does the 791,000 make a difference? I mean, next year it will, but for this year, if, if we were to approve of the bulk of these, let's say, um, are you more comfortable with that than you were two weeks ago when I asked you the question?
I'm much more comfortable tonight after the news that we, that we received this afternoon than I was two weeks ago.
Look, to that point, I mean, this isn't just about next year. It's about two years, we're not gonna get a $700,000 present every year.
Right.
So, you know, we can't spend that money 10 different times, 10, you know, 10 different ways. So it, it's, what do we do the next year when that doesn't happen? Now, you know, it, I certainly am not thinking that that, all that money should be dumped into one year. You know, I mean, it, it's a long-term plan. It's not a year by year because what kind of counseling plan is there if next year we have to get rid of, you know, uh, the, the specialist or something else? I mean, I just think these things need to be paced.
And I don't, I don't disagree with you on that. That's why I had said maybe more of a, a cat, a rollout with this. I don't, I don't disagree with you on that. I just, you know, my concern is I feel like we've heard from the people on the front lines, the teachers, the administrators, and they've been pretty emphatic about what the needs are with some of these issues. And, um, it's, I, I think, you know, we either pay now or we pay later. And we pay later in the form of liability issues, um, maybe sending more kids out for special services, um, you know, all of that stuff ultimately adds up too. So, and maybe, and we don't necessarily hear the nitty gritty of that all the time. So again, you know, pay now, pay later. That's how I'm sort of viewing this.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments still? Okay, so then we can, I have a motion, second to, to separate, but now I need a, a motion this second, I'm sorry, to just, um, do 1A. Carrie and Kristen, thank you. We've discussed it. So, um, now just to vote for the approval of the 1.0 school counselor. All those in favor? Opposed, none? So we're 5-0 on the school counselor. Six, oh, I'm sorry, we're 5 to start it off, thank you. Six.
I'm sorry. It's okay. Sorry.
Um, okay, 6-0 on that. And now we move on to, uh, 1B. I need a motion and a second for that. Carrie and Diane, thank you. We've discussed it, and does anyone else have any other questions or comments on it? Okay. And we now need to take a vote on that one. So all those in favor of the 2.5 retired school counselor to serve as the K-12 counseling specialist until the end of the school year? One, all those opposed? Five, no objections. Um, the motion does not pass. Okay. Now we move on to the approval of staffing for the, uh, A, special education 1.0 physician, school psychologist, and the CSE chair. So that's one person for all of that. Am I reading it correctly? One, special education 1.0 position, school psychologist.
And the behaviors.
Well, the behaviors is 2.5 and that's B. But just to be clear on A, that 1.0 position is a school psychologist and also to be a CSE chair.
Exactly.
Okay. Um, and then 2.5 behavioral analyst. I need a, um, Liz, did you wanna comment or share anything?
I mean, if Liz or Amy needs to add any more clarification for why it's, uh, important to do now, so if you have anything to share.
Yes. Um, at the last meeting, I shared information based on data that we had from prior years. We did, uh, run updated lists to ensure that we have the correct numbers as of today. Um, as of today, we currently have in district across grades K through 12, 417 students who are classified through the CSC and have IEPs. We also have 42 CPSC students. Uh, the total number of 504 students across grades K through 12 is 119. So altogether, this is a total number of 578 students between CSC, CPSC, and 504. Currently, it's myself, Mrs. Osuli, and Mr. Solachi who are chairing all of the meetings for these students. Uh, and so between the three of us, we each have approximately a ratio of 193 students to each one of us. With the additional 2.5, uh, chairperson, this would, um, bring the ratio to about 165 students to each, uh, one of us who are chairing. Um, and at the last meeting, we did discuss how this compares to other districts. As I mentioned, at the end of last year, we had done a survey, um, and researched 17 local districts to see how many, uh, PPS administrators and/or chairpeople they have. And at that time, based on the information that we gathered, the ratio of either PPS admin or chairperson to student was approximately, I'm sorry, let me rephrase, to the ratio of student to PPS admin and/or chair ratio was approximately 63 to 1. So even if we are to move to 3.5, we still chair substantially more meetings and our jobs obviously go well beyond just chairing meetings. Just wanted to mention that.
So I just need a motion. Glenn, a second, Diane, and a discussion. Can we go over, actually, I do have a question regarding the behavioral analyst. I know we've covered this twice now. But just to, um, go over that role again, within the district.
Uh, do you wanna describe what the behavior analyst does? He's gonna be.
Yes.
Just a quick question to more of that. Is this, um, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but isn't this, the 2.5 is to replace?
It's to create a full-time, a 1.0. So there's an existing 2.5. And this is an additional 2.5 to get a 1.0.
Sorry.
Uh, so a behavior analyst assists with consulting with teachers, with parents, with administrators to support students who have special needs and, um, particularly with behavioral, um, you know, needs that they have. Uh, they support the implementation of behavior intervention plans and also with proactive supports to help students to be successful in their, their general education or special education classroom within district. Um, also to collaborate with out-of-district settings. At times, we have students who have behavioral difficulties either in that program or, um, at home or on the bus. Uh, that person definitely serves a key role with collaborating. Um, and it, this, this type of support definitely helps us with providing as much intensive support in district as we can in order to prevent students from going out of district. We do not want to, um, see students need the support of an out-of-district program if we can provide supports within the district. Um, one of the, um, key areas that we often hear, um, when a student's difficulties are arising to the level that, um, the supports that we have in district through psychologists and social workers are maxed out, um, the question becomes, do they need a more intensive program? And those out-of-district programs almost always have a BCBI attached to them. So rather than be in a situation where students would possibly need to go out and receive that type of support, which requires paying tuition to those out-of-district placements, um, it would definitely be helpful if we could have that support within district to, um, give our students what they need and also to, to keep them here in their home settings.
And if you, and you might have said this, and this is for, it's moving up to a 1.0 district-wide?
Yes.
Yes. And, um, and just to ask, to kinda go off what, you know, you brought it earlier. Obviously, there's needs. There's needs in every department of the district. Um, now versus budgeting it for next year through the process of our budget, because, you know, every department can come up here and absolutely ask for many, many things. So just curious as to the, the timing of it now versus just, yeah.
As far as, um, from the financial perspective, the timing is beneficial for the district to do it now because this would help us to bring students back from out-of-district placements, um, by thinking about, you know, help us strategize how we can provide support, um, within district for students who have made progress and maybe are, are reaching a point where they might not need the, to be out of district, uh, which, as I mentioned at the last meeting, the, the range of costs can be anywhere from between, um, up as minimum as, as $25,000 to as much as $150,000 depending on the placement and the supports. There's also a transportation cost in addition to that. Um, so upon having this support, we would be able to take an even closer look at which students we have placed in out-of-district settings who we could possibly bring back. And, um, so say that the average cost of a student who's placed out of district is approximately $75,000. You know, if we can bring so much as one student back, it, in some ways financially, it's sort of, um, evens out. So, but as far as our students and their needs, um, the, the need is absolutely there. We have students who are, are struggling, um, more mental health needs arising from an earlier age, um, and, and the support of a BCBI does help with, uh, helping the student to be successful in the classroom, as I mentioned, collaborating with the psychologists, the social workers, and preventing students from reaching a state of crisis. If they do reach a state of crisis, there is the support within district to intervene right away.
And Liz, the behavior analyst is involved from, like, the, the beginning with the child, not just when a child's in special ed, right? Like there, for the intervention process, the behavior plans?
Absolutely. Yes, the, the person would be involved with the MTSS, the, the building level supports. The, the goal is certainly to be as proactive as possible to give the students the support they need when they need it.
And, and financially, what makes, um, I know logistically it makes more sense to have someone here, in-house.
Right.
But consultant-wise, you, have you used consultants in the past and how has that worked out financially versus?
And that can be costly too because, um, while the person, the consultant through BOSI, say, might not, you know, be, uh, hired and receiving a salary from the district, they do charge an hourly rate, um, which can be higher than at least $100 an hour. Um, there's also, um, issues where if we need somebody, we have to go through a referral process to get them in. Uh, we have to bring them up to speed on the student, on the, the situation with the, um, the class and the program. That takes time, it's additional hours, and the person is not always readily available. Most times they are not. Um, but it, it is costly, um, to have the support being contracted out. So, um, to have the support within district has, has multiple benefits from a financial perspective.
Anyone else? Are we okay with the one vote for both items for this item? Okay, so I have a motion and a second, Susan?
Yep.
We did, okay. Sure. Um, so now we just go to a vote, uh, for both, for all of the approval of staffing for number two. All those in favor? Motion passes 6-0. Okay. Uh, we move on to number three, the approval of staffing. A, 2.5 assistant to the director of PE, health, and athletics, stipended as a teacher on special assignment, and B, a 2.5 PE and health teacher.
Uh, the idea again is that the person who probably is most suited is an existing physical, physical education or health teacher, uh, because content knowledge is important to this particular role. Um, so if it is an existing staff member, uh, we don't know that, but certainly if it is an existing staff member, that person's time would be dedicated to the assistant-to-director position and the other half, uh, 2.5 teaching responsibilities would be the physical, uh, the physical education and health component, uh, which means we would have to backfill because we still need to provide the instruction for the other half of the, you know, of that person's teaching, former teaching role. If in fact, as I said, it is an existing staff member who would like to, to assume half of those responsibilities.
Okay. Um, have a motion, please. Diane, and a second, Kristen. Discussion. So, and just to, if we have, if it was, so this is, if this was someone internal, we would then at some future point need to find another 2.5 and hiring from what, outside the district?
Yeah, we need to do that simultaneously, sort of, because the students are, are, are being instructed. So that 1.0 would have to be in place to cover, almost, that would have to happen first. So we would have to have, um, you know, find a person who would be interested in the 2.5, uh, assistant, assistant to the director role. And then once that's determined and if that is an existing staff member, we would have to post for the 2.5, um, physical education, health teacher role so that, that those students would continue to provide, to be provided with instruction.
Okay, and if not, we would be hiring outside of?
Yeah, we would post it and we, you know, it could be that, it's someone internally. It could be someone who is, let's say, uh, just out of, you know, fresh out of college and, you know, is able to, to assume that role or a retired, you know, educator. So we would, whatever, whoever would, would, uh, respond to the posting, uh, those would be the people that we would, you know, we would interview. And then, as I said, if it's an internal person, it's a, it poses the other issue of making sure that we really have to time the decision pretty, um, you know, closely to make sure that we have the coverage for the, the students.
So for, I guess, someone might have, it's almost like we're just adding a 2.5 to the program.
Plus a stipend?
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm saying, yeah, so it would be a stipend, assuming it was somebody internally, a stipend in 2.5 is what we're talking about, total adding to that department.
Right, because that would be a teacher on special assignment role. So that would still be under the BTA.
Okay, would it be, it wouldn't be an administrator, so the TOSA would be?
Doesn't have to be. I mean, some districts have transitioned into an administrator role for that.
Okay.
I think for all intents and purposes, the most important would be to have someone who is a certified physical education, health teacher so that they could, uh, provide the, uh, support to Dean so that he could attend to some of those areas that he's not able to attend to as well as the other, uh, things that we've heard from, um, Coach Mulvahill and, um, Coach Vitale.
I think when we talk about, you know, finances, the fact that we, um, we have all these mental health requirements and a deadline, so to speak, to meet, um, you know, for next year and to be in place to achieve that goal, um, you know, we can wait, but then we're starting at the time of our deadline essentially to make things happen. And this way we're more progressive in figuring out how things are gonna look and get there, like you mentioned earlier, and a more timely progressive, not rushed manner. I mean, I think other districts, you knew, started last year, um, as soon as they got this, but, you know, we have, of course, there are other things we gotta focus on, so we're here now.
And the phys ed component started July issue.
Right.
So the expectations are that those, the mental health curriculum is being updated now.
Yep, July and then August, exactly.
And again, and we're also, it, it appears at least, you know, And again, and we're also, it appears at least, you know, it's not an administrator, it's more of a stipend or two position.
So just to touch base on what Eddie and his dean's colleagues had said, anybody in the room that's involved with youth sports, I can tell you, Dean is, it's just another component of his job. I mean, he's inundated with emails from us. We're in a town where the youth rely on the school's property to play sports, we have terrible infrastructure in the town for any athletics. Dean is top-notch in getting us field space, sharing it, working out problems. I mean, it's just a whole part of his, it probably was never in his job description. And it's just another, you know, you know, just thing on his plate. I mean, I couldn't, I couldn't support this anymore. I think Dean definitely needs help.
Anyone else?
I'm just saying, Dan, I mean, youth sports, and I see it all the time, that Dean gets running 100 miles an hour. So I wouldn't have to take on it to the board.
I mean, I don't think anyone sitting here disagrees with anything anyone said about any of these positions. There's no, there's no doubt they're all needed, you know, but if there was a math teacher here, there'd be math people in here telling us how important it is and sign, you know, it's just, it's, again, it's uncomfortable for me because it's sort of outside of the norm. And that's not to take away from, you know, the need for any of these things, but it's just, I mean, it puts a knot, it puts a knot in my stomach.
It does for me as well, because I like to have our process, which is our budget process, and have a discussion. And I think, you know, unfortunately, and we can, we can sit there and defy regs as they come down, the different mandates, and then some, you know, they all have consequences to not complying. You know, how soon or not we face the consequence. But, and so, you know, as was discussed in July and then in August, you know, there were four different things that came out that is now going to that department.
Yeah.
And, you know, I guess everyone's doing their best. So this, that's what poses problems for us, you know, when we have to juggle the needs that we have already and then more come at us that we have to do kind of first. Not necessarily always exactly the way, but we do have to address them or eventually we do face the consequences.
Yeah, no, I don't.
So I think, for me at least, in that light, that there, you know, yes, I mean, I think maybe if this wasn't the case, if there weren't these new laws that came out, and we could wait till budget season to say, okay, how are we going to budget for this? But the fact that we do need to meet these other requirements and to get ourselves aligned, you know, as soon as we can in an effective way, I think makes sense, so. Anyway, anyone else? Okay. Okay, so we're on to a vote. We are on number three, yeah. So I guess just all those in favor?
Make a motion.
Did I make a motion? I did.
Yeah.
Yeah, all those in favor, so motion passes six zero. Okay, thank you. Now we move on to approval of staffing for a K-12 Director of STEM, and it's outlined for spring 2019. Anyone want to stand for 10 seconds?
Sure. We've talked about this, we had, actually, we spent a great deal of time talking about it last night in C-19. Again, the standards have changed and really point out the need to make sure that these content areas don't rest in silos. So it's no longer content, for the sake of content, students have to be able to do something with the content. So math, science, technology is part of the same set of standards. So there's an expectation that students have, whether they are explicit or are suggested that mathematical practices are embedded into the, into the current new next-gen standards, that there are engineering practices embedded, and that there are, you know, obviously, as I said, mathematics, engineering, and technology standards that are integrated. So there's no longer this sense that there's, that's a separate content area, those are all three separate content areas, but they rest under STEM. There are certainly districts that have moved towards this direction and have, you know, been able to do, have, you know, put a STEM person or administrator in place. Carmel is one of those districts. They have a STEM coordinator that's an administrator, and that person basically does, as I have the job description, a number of things that, you know, we've been talking about. They are responsible for the integration of the courses of study in the areas of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. As Michelle can share with you the work that she's doing around coding for all, that's a big part of the STEM family, and those skills rest there as well. This person would create a framework, a long-term plan for the integration of educational technology, and as the Innovators Collegial Circle described, that former instructional technology specialist that was district-wide no longer exists, so that, no one's doing that. So the STEM person would incorporate those experiences into the work that they would be doing to ensure that that, those skills are integrated. This person would have responsibilities around evaluating, observing staff, and attending conferences. This person would report to the Assistant Superintendent, which is what currently happens in Carmel. That person reports to the Assistant Superintendent for curriculum instruction and assessment. Obviously, the person spends time looking at instructional materials and resources, coordinating across the district with all of those departments, looking at other examples, most importantly, working with that group of experts, those teachers who have a lot of knowledge and a lot of experience and would be able to pull together a comprehensive, coherent K-12 curriculum and set of assessments. They are obviously also involved with looking at the use of assistive technology for students with disabilities. That's part of the description that's, that the person who is overseeing STEM in Carmel is currently doing. And there are a variety of other responsibilities and duties, but right now we don't have a single content specialist functioning in our district. It makes us rare in that regard. So we don't have a district-wide mathematics specialist or administrator, or science, or, you know, technology, or English, or any of those. So, and science, as you know, is one of the accountability areas under ESSA along with BLA in math. Obviously, some people might think that this is a responsibility that can fall to the administrators in the buildings. I asked Mrs. Gosh to talk about what the current, you know, what a typical day looks like for a building-level administrator so that you understand that it isn't something that these responsibilities can't be easily enveloped into their current responsibilities.
Sure. So Vanessa, to share what a typical day is like, say, for a principal, and while it's advocating for, you know, a certain position tonight, please keep this framework in mind as we move forward. You know, if we really want to strengthen our curriculum instruction assessment and professional learning, you know, creating these layers of support because it's important to be able to support teachers in their, in improving student learning. So anyway, here's some, I broke out my thoughts in really two different, two different categories. First is scheduled items. So, you know, first and foremost, we have observations, both announced and unannounced. Building principal could have upwards of 30 observations, 30 announced observations. Each of those observations, as Frank mentioned before, has a pre, a post, each about 45 minutes. The observation itself takes about 45 minutes, and then, of course, the administrator needs to, needs to write that up, domains one through three, in preparation for the post observation, and then going back and creating and writing domain four once that post observation is over. So if you're looking at, I, you know, just estimate, and it's a very conservative estimate, about three and a half hours per observation. We also have the building administrators doing unannounced observations this year in different buildings. So they, because that's part of the APPR requirements, where they cannot, you have an independent evaluator for, for each teacher. So those observations take 10 minutes for non-tenure, 20 minutes for, I'm sorry, 20 minutes for non-tenure, 10 minutes for tenured teachers, and then the administrators then still have to write those up, could be upwards of 20 to 25 teachers, again, a conservative estimate. And those numbers will only increase as the years go on because we'll have more and more non-tenured teachers, and those non-tenured teachers require multiple, multiple observations for the announced observations. A building principal has these seasonal, big-picture items to deal with. So in the fall, it's the opening of school, getting things running, which it, it looks like it just works, but it doesn't. There's a lot of planning that goes on into the summer, and then a lot of tweaking and refining in the fall. Because Victor is relentless, the budget season starts pretty early in the, in the winter, but really I know that already the principals have had meetings with their each liaison, and the idea is go line by line to see what it is that they're submitting and how that fits into, into the big-picture plan. And in the spring, of course, there's master scheduling and placement of students. We ask the building administrators to oversee the multi-tier system of support process so we know that that has PBIS and RTI components. They have new educator sessions, and I cannot emphasize enough, in thinking about, you know, the next three to five years, we need to make sure we have infrastructure support for new educators because we want to make sure we are able to recruit and retain these new educators because there will be a teacher shortage in terms of our teachers retiring and the number of teachers entering, new teachers entering the field. We ask principals to monitor the attendance of both students and staff members. They are supporting, scheduling, PLCs, assemblies, overseeing discipline, safety, of course. Some advice that more experienced principals give to newer principals is that hiring is one of the most important things you can do, so you put a lot of time into it. We ask them to be on committees, APPR, professional learning, SCP, policy. They have to lead faculty and liaison meetings, which takes more work than it might seem. They have to make sure they attend professional learning in their building, and they have the scheduled meetings, of course, with the PPS team, with us, with Kathy, with Jim, to make sure that all the different parts are working together. So those are just the scheduled items. One of my earliest mentors told me, okay, look at your calendar in the beginning of the day, and then know that no single day will go as planned. It will never, you will never leave at the end of the day saying, you know what, that they planned exactly as it looked on my calendar. Never, never happens. So, so, you know, some of the unscheduled things. The principal is the point person for every staff member in that particular building. So it could be things from, you know, simple management issues like parking lot disputes, let's say, all the way to, you know, the principal a lot of times is a, I want to say a therapist, but they're a welcoming presence that makes sure that, that people who are having, let's say, personal family issues, they hear those out, they support them, they plan for any perhaps incidents that might impact attendance moving forward. We have the, we know what happens with, with students with discipline issues, with emotional issues, there are the parent phone calls, I was texting at 6:00 AM with one principal, I won't mention your name, about a, you know, parent issue that we were, that we were, you know, problem-solving about, those emails. I could, I could go on and on, and I would just say, you know, even beyond this one particular position, you know, supporting the hiring of administrators to help us further the mission of supporting student learning isn't a bad thing. You know, we need to think about the layers of support that we will have built in. We'll have a new math program next year. I know Carmel also has a math coach, that's something I've been envious of, because I know that teachers are working like crazy in order to, you know, work through these pilots, and it's, you know, something else that, having that math coach, someone that they could, could go to with, with questions would be, would be important. You know, we have digital learning benchmarks that we've worked on as part of our CS for all grant. We've, you know, talked about science, new framework for social studies. So I would just ask that, you know, rethinking, just because it's our current structure for any, you know, any of these positions, doesn't necessarily mean that it's the one that we're stuck in moving forward. I think I went over my time. I think I had another two minutes.
I don't know if there's any other AAB-related comment.
Okay, so I just need a motion?
Oh, just one other thing. So the spring would really be, I mean, this is not a position that's right now. This is a position that we can transition to and put into place by, you know, April or May of this school year, which would give the person an opportunity to plan for the summer. Because summer, the summertime is a really key time to work with educators, to make sure that, you know, there's minimal disruption during the course of the school day, there would always be some need at some point, depending upon, you know, who, what's happening for teachers to have to leave their classrooms to learn. But we need to really capitalize on the summer, which is why the positioning of this position is in April, May start, so that that person can get in and get started. We can certainly post with the, you know, at some point to, you know, leading up to that. I mean, I don't know how many people out there who, you know, are interested in a Director of STEM position. It can be any number, it could be a certification in any, any of these four areas. It doesn't have to be a science-certified teacher, it could be a math or in Carmel, it's actually, the person that they hired has a master's in educational technology. But again, districts do, you know, things according to, you know, their own context. So that's, you know, if we are to fulfill the mission of the standards that we are to be a competitive district, you know, where we attract, you know, not only, you know, not only keep the people who are here, but attract families who really recognize the importance of having a solid STEM program where our children are going on to semen competitions. We haven't sent children to semen competitions. You know, that's, that's the rock star of robotics, and where, you know, that's very much, you know, predicated upon the science education program that's in existence in a school district. There are districts that do, and those districts have these people in place who can actually help pull this together, together and integrate those skills so that children are having, you know, the, you know, similar high-quality, rigorous experiences that, you know, make them want to love and do science and do science in the ways in which the, you know, the century is requiring our students to be able to do. They're not just going to go out and use science content, they need all four, plus the skills that we're teaching them or trying to integrate through our own strategic governance plan. So again, our neighbor district Carmel has a STEM coordinator who is an administrator, and that's been in place for a while. And if you, if you've ever visited Carmel, which we have as part of our exploration for our Project Leap Away STEM curriculum that we are integrating, we have three, we have two classes at the high school, two engineering classes in the whole district in the high school. We have some course, some Project Leap Away integration, starting second through Z-Star. We have two, two, three courses at the middle school. We can't have this sort of like spot, you know, you know, kind of catch-and-catch can system. We need an integration, we need a coherence, we need a K-12 plan. We need to make sure that all of our children are having daily science instruction and so that there are no gaps in their learning along the way, and that we are making the connections for them in terms of the use of the mathematical practices, and that we're integrating technology, not as a standalone, but it has to be integrated into, into the experiences that children are having. And as I said, it doesn't have to happen right now, but we, it would behoove us to take a look at trying to make it happen at some point closer to the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. So a motion, please, Kristen in the second. Glenn, discussion.
So you said administrator, not a TOSA?
No, following what our neighbor Carmel is doing, they have a STEM coordinator and it is an administrative position.
And would this person, for a semester, be doing evaluations?
They would. And again, it's like every administrator, every administrator would have to bear some responsibility, and that's even more important in light of what Michelle shared about the numbers of new educators who are coming on board. Those are three announced observations plus one or two unannounced, one. One unannounced and three announced, and so we can't afford not to have an administrator who would not be involved in ensuring that we are fulfilling our obligations under APPR. But most importantly too, as we've heard, even with, you know, when Coach Mulderhill mentioned the need for, you know, our newer people to also be mentored, they need people who can mentor and coach them and help them to be successful, rather than, you know, develop, you know, a sense of frustration and leave. We can't afford to have these people leave us, you know, and go someplace else because then we'll be in a dribble cage forever, you know, trying to replace those people who may leave because we can't, you know, attend to them in the way that we, you know, that would help them to get through their four years of probation, of probation.
So for me, I kind of have, I've made my pros and cons list as from already coming into the meeting, plus as everyone was discussing and presenting. And, and I agree with, you know, what everything, everything that's been said, and what you said earlier, it'd be great, you know, we have lots of needs and it'd be great to allow these. And what you said earlier, it'd be great, you know, we have lots of needs and it'd be great to allow it in. I do agree we need K-12 coherence. I have a big, it's my big push thing that I do to make sure that we just have good alignment and coherence. And, you know, right now, as you mentioned, you know, each building, each department has, well, not every, but there are liaisons. So now you're asking, there needs to be some sort of way it's all brought together. We've talked a lot about time, you know, restraints that teachers struggle to come together. So having a kind of central person to foster the conversation and implement and oversee, to me, it's someone that's needed. My concerns are, unlike some of the other discussions we've had previously, you know, it's not a mandate, but it is something that aligns with, you know, our vision for where, how we meet the needs of our students. You know, the other districts do have some version of it. But while that's important to me, to absolutely look at what other districts do, you know, we really, we do great things. We really need to just, I don't want to be competing. It's like we should just be striving for what's best for our kids. And we should be the model for the country. What else? The two things that really kind of stick with me, though, is that we still need teachers. You know, we've had a lot of retirements and we haven't replaced some teachers. And some departments have been depleted because of that. And we needed to. Budgets were what they were. And so while I know you said, you know, and I do agree that summer is a crucial time to get a lot of stuff done. I personally, though, think that this is an item that can wait for the budget process to unfold and be implemented. And the other thing that came up, while it was a C-19 science meeting that we had, it'd be interesting at some point to get STEM departments kind of working together also and having a discussion. But the idea of the task force and one of the things that came up was, you know, there's two ways to look at it. Having a person to help coordinate and plan or having the group figure out kind of what the plan is and what the needs are. So just two perspectives on it. And for me, I really just, I think this is an item that can wait to the budget process and making sure that our teachers, you know, the needs of the students are met with the teachers that need to fill, if possible. Since there potentially is some extra funding, you know, I'd like to replace some of the retirements that happened and that we weren't able to replace first. And then coordinate and get there in a thoughtful way because I am 100% behind this direction. I just think that we first need to fill some other needs. And then, if there's still room and we can, then let's absolutely go forward. But I just think the budget process needs to play out for me for this one. But that's just my take.
That's, you know, one's more of a big proponent of a STEM leader, so to speak. I just, as you had stated, there has been, that science department across the board has been decimated. And the budget being what it was for years before I got here and years that I've been here, I think we need to fill the holes first before we worry about the overarching thing. Because I think, because from C-19 being that the way it's been going with the different groups, the teachers know what their students need. They know, and, you know, and they know how to teach the subject matter. And I believe that there is the ability with the liaisons to do like the collegial circle amongst each group. And then I think it will end up, they will start, you'll start to get some coherence. So personally, I too would rather just wait until the spring and we'll, you know, see what the money aspect is. But if we're going to start doing something with, you know, in particular with science, is we need to start filling some holes. If the money's there and, you know, and give the kids the labs back. And I, that's just the way I feel right now.
Yeah, and I'm not, I don't want to, I don't want to negate, no, but I also don't want to negate, you know, the show you brought up, you know, there was a lot of information there and I took notes of that as well. And I absolutely don't want to negate the needs our administrators have because, you know, we just talked about Dean and they're there, we get that. But we just, we have to prioritize, you know, our finances. When we looked at mandated things, okay, we get it. And this is a personal, I would say a personal mandate that we should have on ourselves to achieve this goal. But I just would like to go through it in a more thoughtful manner and prioritize and get there. It just may not be the second. It might be in, you know, during the budget process that says, okay, yeah, we can feel comfortable about this direction now or we might need to wait, you know, a year and get there. So that's just, again.
I would just, you know, I was at the C-19 meeting with the science group and it was unsettling to see the ratio of teachers to students in the high school and the number of hours that our students receive science instruction versus other districts. I've never, you know, been in a position where those were put in front of me. And I just keep thinking that, and we talked about how Carmel came up, other East Chester, I think, was one, where they have, you know, excellent programs in place. And I think it's great that we have, there's models. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. There's nothing wrong with, you know, we should be looking at these other districts and if they're doing something better, aspiring to that, which I think is what this, you know, director of STEM is intended to do. But I keep thinking of it, you know, you can't build a model if you don't have all the pieces. You know, it's never going to look like the picture on the box. And we do not have the pieces at the high school. We don't. And what I heard from all of the teachers, elementary, everyone who attended last night was certainly the desire. But we, you know, we have to, we're ahead of ourselves, I think.
I too was at the C-19. And I agree, I think this is something, I think we need it. I don't know we need it this second. I would like to see it budgeted. I would, I would like to see it budgeted for next year. I also would like to see the task force or advisory committee sort of drive what the STEM director would do, what they would like to see come out of it. You know, I do think that there are long-term benefits to having a director. You know, they'd be able to turnkey training a little bit more so we wouldn't have to fill teachers as much. We wouldn't have to send them maybe to as many conferences and workshops. We could send a director and they could bring it back. So I think there are a lot of benefits. And, but I do agree that it was clear last night that there needs to be some attention and support given to the secondary science.
Same thing. I would rather wait till we get to budget season. Sounds like a very positive program, but I don't think we need to look at that right now. I think we, I need to go back and look at it when we get to budget season.
Do you have to add?
Pretty sure. Please, one sec.
Okay, so now we can move on to a vote. All those in favor of the K-12 director of STEM?
Can I ask a question?
Is this something, before we vote, is this something that gets tabled or do we actually vote on this now?
Well, the proposal is to staff it with this year's budget. So by us, we could do either, we could table it or we could just vote against it. Because essentially the question, it's called the question, are we going to? I don't know if we table it, though. I think it really is a vote because you're-
Because if it'd be put in the budget, then-
Yeah, it's a whole new issue. This is discussing it for the current budget that we're living in right now.
Okay.
To put into place current staffing. So we'd be voting against or for putting it into place for this current school year still. Because the idea was for spring 2019, which would have to use the funds.
This is currently, okay.
Yeah, so it would come up again, but it would have a different definition of the timing. So it's a vote, yeah. Thank you for clarifying. So, okay, all in favor? All those opposed? If motion fails, six, zero, oh, zero, six, or however that's said. Sales passed it. Okay. So now we move on to the acceptance of enrollment projection report.
I'll take that. So each year we have an enrollment projection that we use for our budgeting to try to identify what our incoming kindergarten class will be for the following school year. We have a five-year projection each year. The trend continues that we have a world kindergarten replacement. And what kindergarten replacement is, it's the difference between the outgoing senior class and the incoming kindergarten class. So again, our incoming kindergartners are less than our outgoing seniors and we're likely to see a slight decline in enrollment for the next couple of years. However, live birth data, which is used to determine kindergarten, incoming kindergarten, five years after the birth data available, shows that we'll likely bottom out and may actually show an increase in enrollment beginning in the 22, 23 school year. This report, in its entirety, is available on the curriculum and instruction website under data and assessments we take a look at. We have a specialist prepare this on our behalf. They look at all sorts of data, including housing starts and live birth data.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion, please? Kristin, in second. Glenn, question or comments? One that I had, so you know how Victor, you talked about having, and I forget the proper title, having a special type of savings that's planned for, for a specific reason? Is that what capital reserve, is that what it's called?
Could be, I'm not sure where you're going with that.
No, well, because it just, you know, normally it's like, we know we're going to need a roof in 20 years. We can start slowly planning for it.
That would be a capital reserve.
Yeah. Well, it's just interesting to me with, you know, having birth data. And I don't know what that type of fund specifically can be used for, but I'm wondering if, you know, it seemed to me like buildings and maintenance type thing. But educationally speaking, if there's an influx in some years, you know, can we also use that type of money one day to plan for that kind of stuff? I don't know. Again, we haven't had that yet.
Yeah, there's no reserve for that.
No, type of thing. I don't know. I asked, I asked, to make sure you don't get it wrong. Okay, so that was just, you know, you know what's coming your way. You can plan for it, it's always better, but you just can't plan for everything. Okay, so any other questions or comments on this? You know, all the ways in favor of accepting the report. If motion passes, secure. Six, approval of budget advisory committee charter, right? For the approving of the committee? How does that work? You mean we're approving the-
Sure, the establishment of a budget advisory. It's a practice that's common enough in districts that it's a way to help establish greater transparency around the decisions that have to be made. It's part of the education of, you know, in service to the community of the whole budgeting process. So this is an example of what happens during a budget advisory group and an articulation of the mission. It's an advisory, it's certainly not a decision-making group. It reports to the Board of Education with recommendations. So again, it's just another way to get more eyes on the budget, on the process, more input, more ways in which the community can get information about specifics, ways in which this group can potentially find other avenues in the community to share this information, to get some, you know, get other sort of perspective. So it's really a way of widening the van of perspectives around the budgeting process. And then by the time we get to the actual budget process, the official state prescribed budget process in March, then there's a lot of that groundwork that's already been done in terms of, similar to the budget 101s that Victor has been developing and describing. But this is just a way to get your buy-in on the establishment of the advisory. It hasn't been constituted yet, but it does describe for you the kinds of people who would sit on this group. It would be representatives from the collective bargaining groups, units, Board of Education members, you know, potentially two members, community members and staff members. Victor, could you speak to the invitation that's already been sent out to enlist?
We sent a bear backpack out last week. Our goal is to have our first budget advisory committee meeting in concert with our December 12 budget 101 workshop. The first few budget advisory committee meetings will be married to our budget 101 workshops. Again, just to give everyone a good foundation before we get into the actual 2019, 20 budget development. So right now, we're speaking in global, global terms, 10,000-foot view. Starting in January, February, we're going to get more into 2019, 20 budget. So again, we're going to send another bear backpack out, seeking membership for participating on committee. And we'll do that and also notify everyone of the availability of budget 101 documents at our website.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion? Kristin and Diana, second. And discussion. So then the committee, the charter, it's a draft right now. The committee once formed me and just finalized the charter for the group itself as it's-
Well, the language right now, like, we're looking at, the way the language reads, it's saying-
Yeah, that was removed up.
Right.
We're not having that going yet.
So that one?
Yeah. Right, so what you were saying, the advisory committee is going to need to figure out. But this is a draft charter, right?
Right, this is a draft charter for the board's, you know, edification so that you can see what this group's charge is, basically. And then you can decide whether you agree with some of these things. Do you think there should be more people who are on the board? Do you want a student on this advisory? You know, we have this student here. The duties, which is really to, you know, to help to develop a greater sense of transparency and understanding of the process. Is this, are these duties, duties that you believe to be the function of this advisory? The kinds of documents that would be provided, the meetings, you know, so basic, these are sort of like the basic ingredients that we would want you to look at to see whether you would approve this because this is supposed to serve this group you and be able to, as I said, fill as much information as possible, provide as many perspectives, input suggestions. But again, they are not, you know, you're the decision-makers. I mean, this is simply, you know, this is an advisory group function.
I think anytime we can offer, you know, students to participate in anything is appropriate and fine. And I think also just having a, ultimately, a list of who is part of the committee and the role, you know, just to see the representation. And I am hoping that, it's our first time we're doing it, we're trying to be more inclusive. Yeah, and we're working with everyone from all fronts. So I just want to make sure that it's represented well. I think it's fine the way we use that name a lot for a couple of times.
I mean, that's fine. I mean, just, you know, if we just add the word student in there. I mean, if there are any that are interested.
There probably are.
You know, sometimes you have, you never know. But in any case, you know, I mean, outside of that, it's fine. I mean, these are the charters, no different than for any of the extracurricular clubs or any of that. So it's the same concept. It's what they do, who they're reaching and, you know.
Does it have a date on there? Because generally, any committee that is a resource to us, you know, some have policies long-term, others are for a specific purpose and time. So perhaps the only thing I would maybe add is that it's for the particular budget because maybe some people need to come off it, they won't be able to continue the following year. And so it's a year-to-year committee. That's the only thing, I don't see the 2019, 20-
Right. I don't know about, I mean, that's, I think, you should consider that. I mean, the whole notion of having some consistency across, like, policy. Policy is what, two years? I think it's two years.
You have two, you have a member at large for two years and then a member at large for one year? And then some that just don't leave.
No, it's coming to replace them.
I think that's something to consider, what the time commitment's going to be. If it's going to be one year, two years, like, what's the maximum and what's the-
I just don't want to, you know, I think because it's very, I mean, I think having the advisory committee ongoing is fine. I don't know if there can be a clause so that the charter stands but that maybe the language just reads, instead of the year, it's budgets per budget season or something. Just so that, you know, because while I agree with the continuity of understanding, but each year's budget really is unique unto itself depending on the finances in this district and it's kind of very specific conversational. district, and it's kind of very specific conversation. And I don't want people to feel like, you know, the life necessarily.
It may, right, it may be unattractive to people to think that they're committing to something per year period. You know, and it's not even a year. I mean, it's, you know, from now until May.
And as I said, this is a charter that exists for a district that's been doing this for a very long time.
Yeah. Yeah, I would, I would think that'd be the only language I'd like to just ask, that per each budget season, and it can be an option, maybe that's it, for committees, members to reassess their commitment. Just something like that, that's all.
How many meetings, Victor, are, how many meetings are we anticipating that the members of this make?
I think I counted six, did you have?
Okay, so six.
Yeah, six, and three of which are our budget 101 workshops, so we can condition that, because our budget 101s end, I think, in January, maybe February. But that's really when the 2019-20 actual budget development really heats up. So again, the first three would be budget 101s, global, 10,000-foot view. The following three would be real, you know, really into the weeds in, into 2019-20.
And when will the committee, like, present their opinions and recommendations to us? Is it, like, multiple times over the course? Is it once?
It's really through their minutes, so the minutes of the, each of the meetings would then be reported to the board.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, so, all those in favor of a budget advisory committee? Six zero, sorry. Anyone? Okay, move to Chad with six zero. Thank you. Okay, move on to number seven, approval of tax receivers' reports and tax collection reassignment.
This is an annual resolution. The public county, on behalf of the school district, will collect taxes that are unpaid to date. The county will make the district poll, and then they'll seek any outstanding taxes on our behalf.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion, please? Kristen and Carrie, second. Any questions or comments on this? Okay, all those in favor? Motion passes six zero. Number eight, approval of tax refunds and budget amendment number 11.
Yes, these are two refunds, they've been reviewed by our treasurer and also our attorneys, and also the tax collector in the tent. $9,600 of this refund is coming out of the Tax Reserve Reserve, which is the cause for budget amendment number 11.
Okay, I need a motion. Kristen and Carrie, second, thank you. And any questions or comments on this item?
I thought I am gonna.
No, I'm just like, nope.
Going into taxes?
Yeah, there's not a whole lot you can say about it.
Okay, so all those in favor? Motion passes six zero. Number nine, resolution for interim deputy treasurer and designation of signatures on checks.
So on our checks above $7,500, it requires two signatures, one being a manual signature. The resignation of our assistant director of business, Denise Hare McCombe, you need to fill the role of second signatory. So we're recommending the appointment of Kathy Keen as deputy treasurer with no additional compensation. And let me just follow up. Once Denise is replaced, her replacement will then revert back to being the second signatory.
Okay. Motion? Glenn in the second. Danny? Questions or comments?
That'll be a second, when the replacement comes in. So in the interim, we'll have Kathy Keen sign as the second signatory.
Okay, any else? All those in favor? Motion passes six zero. Number 10, approval of instructional services contract inheritance bill of rights with EI US LLC DBA run well.
This is a tutoring service contract for our special needs students. It's been reviewed by attorneys and is recommended for approval by this candidate.
Thank you. I need a motion, please? Diane and Kristen, my second, thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Motion passes six zero. Number 11, acceptance of donation from the EF for instructional grants.
We'd like to extend our sincere gratitude to the First Generation Foundation for their support of us. They've awarded $6,300 in grants to our teachers, one being for the formal fair, spring and floor investigation, breakout boxes, and my fullness.
Okay, thank you. Any other motion, please? Glenn in a second. Kristen? Any questions or comments?
Thank you, really. Just a, thank you.
I'm just trying to think back, have, in both our presentations, I think it might be nice to invite the rep, some reps from the EF, including myself, to come and maybe have some of the recipients of some of the grants over time, this year, last year, whatever it's been, and just present, even maybe with some students, just, you know, how, because I know they hear about it, but it might be nice to just have them coming in at some point, to savor.
Absolutely. Buy a ticket for the gala, what's the date?
Oh, that too.
Twenty days.
April.
Wasn't the talent show coming?
Talent is coming out soon. That happens, so talent is next. But okay, so any other questions or comments? And just a vote, all those in favor? Motion passes six zero. Number 12, approval of stipulation of settlement for employee number 525. Catherine's not here, but anyone wanna?
This is the employee, exec session-ish item that we were waiting for the employee to sign the MOA, and that has taken place.
Okay. I need a motion, please? Kristen and Carrie? Thank you. Any questions or comments? So just a vote, all those in favor? Motion passes six zero. 13, approval of policies first read, four, 773 diploma or credential options for students with disabilities, four, 774 participation in graduation ceremonies and activities, nine, 150 staff-student relations, fraternization.
Yes, thank you. Our policy committee met in early November, reviewed these policies, our legal counsel also vetted them, so we submit that to you for first read approval.
Thank you. Any other motion? Diane and Kristen, thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Motion passes six zero. Okay, consent agenda. Catherine's not here.
These are newly appointments, some of which will start immediately upon the end of this board meeting. So it's a number of teachers, teaching assistants, bus drivers, monitors, co-curricular appointments. We have even a more, a recent graduate from our school district who will start volunteering. And we have a retirement of Ms. Julie Soraka over at the high school. She's not going yet, though. She's getting, getting ready, but she did submit her letter over the, for the intent to retire, effective December of 2019.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion, please? Carrie and Glenn, thank you. Any questions on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes six zero. Remarks? Can we move on to board remarks? Committee updates.
I wanted to bring one thing up. I have a friend of mine who teaches in Mount Kistco, if I brought this up just before, please stop me, but she teaches in an elementary school that has a dual-language program. Is that something we would ever look into, consider, or want to pursue, and what would that entail?
For elementary or?
Elementary. Elementary, yeah.
Well, there, I mean, we have actually visited, a few years ago, a school district that had longstanding dual-language program, where students are learning several days during the week strictly in one language, perhaps Spanish, and then the other couple of days it's in English. Those programs are rolled out over time, you know, class by class. Obviously, parents have to agree for their children to be in a dual-language program, because it's not everyone's cup of tea. But it does require the modern language program to sit and review, again, looking at it from the standpoint from K-12, as a K-12 program, because obviously, you know, any add-on is going to affect then what happens when children are starting their, you know, mandated state, you know, state-mandated course-taking credit development in grades six through, I mean, actually, seven through 12. So if it's something that we would like to think about, I mean, again, there, you know, there are many districts that have longstanding FLESS programs, that's a foreign language and elementary schools program. It's certainly, you know, age nine, I believe it is, when the brain's most primed to learn a second language, and even earlier, as it's saying. And, you know, we know with our numbers of students who, just last year, in our second year of having the SEAL of I Literacy, we had 22 students who received that designation as really significant. So we certainly have a foundation, just based upon that, which already says we have a really phenomenal modern language program. So we have the talent here to develop a process of looking at how we could eventually establish a dual-language program. So it's up to the board to determine whether that's something we want us to convene, to pull together a committee to study this, you know, the feasibility of this, the viability of this, and then bring forth, you know, our thinking. And we do have that as part of our K-5 after-school club, so there was, you know, there is, you know, some, some language, which of course, that's not every child, you know, who gets that, you know, because we don't have a resource to offer it to every student. So we are, you know, that would be, again, another reason for a new family to consider our district, because that's a pretty prestigious thing to offer, is exposure to language of the world's ages.
It'd also help to meet some of the ENL meetings, at least.
I was gonna say, what is 154? Is that, yeah.
So then, no, I just, so my question is, so that, we'll just say K through five, or we'll go K through two, just for start. So that particular teacher would have to be certified in both, and we're having a hard time finding that for that.
That person would have to be a language teacher.
Has to be a?
If we, in terms of the FLESS program, it would have to be a certified world language teacher.
So that's different from what ENL means, is that right? Okay. I mean, I'd be curious to see if it's even feasible, I mean, I don't know.
You know, I just am asking, you know, because I don't know, is it the same type of teacher, or a different type of teacher, or?
So I'm not clear on the answer. Is it the same? I mean, we just had a presentation at the last meeting about how, sort of, requirements for ENL that we're not able to meet, whether because it's shortage of teachers or whatever it is, so I don't.
So the program that you're speaking about in Mount Kistco is, the Mount Kistco Elementary School is the dual-language program that's served towards community needing ENL students, however, there are non-ENL students in that program as well, so they have, you know, one day in Spanish, one day in English. And they, I think the model they use is they flip teachers. But there are a number of different, of different models that can be used, depending on what the needs are and what the board was.
Because they're teach, they're learning in that particular content area?
Yes, yes. So all their math word problems are in Spanish. For, than I'd say that their ELA is in Spanish, social studies is in Spanish, and then the next day it's in English.
And it doesn't meet?
It does.
It would meet.
It would meet, yeah, for the, for students who are, yes.
So it'd be offering them for the non-ENL students.
As well.
It'd be both, right? So people who would, I mean, I don't know, just, right, there would keep people opt into it, because you wouldn't want, right, and then?
Yeah, you can't, in other words, you can't assign a child to that class. Their, their parents would have to say, this is what I'm interested in, and I would prefer my child to learn too.
And is that, whatever, examples of this you guys know, is that like one class out of four, or is it just based on?
So Mount Kistco Elementary, it's all but one, but that's because of the popularity that's there. I think, I think they have eight sections, so it's like seven out of eight sections are dual-language, but it would be different here. You know, I, unless.
Well, because I know up in Sullivan County, I forgot the name of the school district, I had it written down at home, they have it, they just, they had it one class, let's just say that it was four per grade, you know, four sections, they had one class that was dual-language. They had to add a second class, because it got that popular, to, you know, to a second section, like, yeah, it was like.
So, I mean, two comments. I mean, for me, I grew up with two languages, and I personally see the benefit of it. But my question is, again, you know, budget restrains needs, we still need to work on that, we have to focus on currently, that we talked about in the district, across every department. So for me, what I'm, which is why I ask, you know, I know that there was the presentation, but if it were to fill, solve a problem regarding, you know, potential, well, mandates and existing issues and potential, you know, being cited by the state or whatever, I don't know. I don't, to roll out a new program like that right now with everything else that we have on the table wouldn't make sense for me. I'd love to see it one day, but again, the question that comes, is it, you know, and I don't know, because I know that there's still ongoing discussion. So I don't know if it's a new committee to discuss language per se, but perhaps as an option, as one option that might serve the need to not be cited and make sure we, you know, had those mandates. You know, in that context, for me, I'd consider having a presentation, but through that work.
So if it's satisfied, if it, if it's satisfied an existing need and then was an additional offering, then that's great. But if it's something more than what we're already struggling to find, then I think, I don't know why we would, you know, go that way.
Not this time.
You know, so, I don't know. And I also think you have to have a gauge from the community as to, you know, the interest in that, too.
Yeah, so maybe, I mean, just my thought, for now, anyway, is part of the work and research you're doing, that shit mail concerns that we have to, things stand or whatever we need to meet, would be part of that, if there's some bit for it.
It is one of the models.
But in that context, that would be my suggestion. It's not a separate committee discussion, it's just part of, and not a whole discussion that's already happening.
And that might be a recommendation that they, that DNL, and, you know, you guys make, and then we can go from there.
Well, the conversation kind of is already formulated with that SEAL of I Literacy group, because those are ENL and world language teachers already. I mean, so they're, they're certainly a foundation of conversation already underway.
Right.
Anything else? No? I wanted to ask the board, so since we didn't vote for the extra day with our votes person, the extra day was gonna help the board in some of our work, I'd like to, as we've done in the past, create our own little ad hoc committee, sorry. It's one of our goals for the year, but since we don't have that person, we've done it in the past, we've done it for community questions, and we've done it for the after-school activities, the clubs and all that, we had to kind of go through, we created a committee and did work, same thing with our board manual, we always create a little committee and people work to get certain things done. So I'd like to pose that we create a committee of three people, you know, to, I don't just want one person doing it, but we just talked about having a survey going out to the public about forums and discussion topics with the board in a more open forum, right, it's more engaging type environment, and we originally said we would get that out by November 12th. We don't, and we don't have, we're gonna use our votes as persons, so we don't have that. So we still need to put that out there. And really, it's just, again, some, three people getting together to discuss what those questions should be, what do you, what do we want to ask, you know, what are we looking, what kind of feedback are we looking for? what do you, what do we want to ask, you know, what are we looking, what kind of feedback are we looking for? And, um, you know, and then just bring it back to the board, what you guys, whoever the three people are, thought that would be the best thing to put out in that survey, so we can get that out sooner or later. And then part two of that would also be, is my idea. But, um, I wanted to have a kind of a tri-fold or maybe just a two-page something, but more, you know, smaller with, along with the agendas, as a company of people come into the board meetings, that just briefly have, um, in a single change, information will change, but just a little bit of information about board, you know, who we are, what we do, um, how things work, when there's time for engagement, just a little bit of explanation of things.
And we're gonna get that into three little things?
Two, on that. But anyway, so I, I wanted to see if you guys would be open, if we don't have our votes as a person for the extra time, if three of us or even just two of us would be willing to get together and meet on our own for that purpose.
Is anything for you, Susan?
No. It's not for me, it's for the community. And it's our goal for the year.
She's the English guru.
Oh, now, now I get choked out. I'll, I'll help, I'll do it.
Okay, okay.
I'll, I'll help.
Yeah?
Sure.
Um, okay, there's three. Good, okay, 'cause it can't have four.
You know that.
Okay, thank you. And last thing is, um, fielding visits. We were gonna get, get on that in the early part of the year and we kind of let the ball drop on that. Maybe we can just kind of email back and forth to set up some dates that we can just, I know it's a little crazy now, but.
Yeah, it's a challenge, but it wouldn't, ball didn't drop, it just didn't happen.
I know, I know, it's been a lot. So maybe we can just, quote, make some walkthroughs of?
I can have Susan just try to, you know, figure out the best time for all of the cats to come together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, fine, that's all, for me. Anyone else? Catherine? Okay. Yeah, public remarks. So if anyone would like to comment now, um, we'll come to the podium, state your name, in two minutes.
Hi, I'm Shannon Callanan. I guess I was a little shocked tonight at the addition of some of the positions that happened outside of budget season. So what we did talk about tonight and what was not on a line item is the actual cost. So four or five weeks ago, there was a meeting that we talked about lump sums. It wasn't assigned to a position. It talked about if we did it from December to June, that the cost would be roughly three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So all in, that's probably about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's added to an annual budget. So now, we didn't add all those positions. Tonight, we didn't talk about money at all. So no one here, from what I've seen in the public documents or the discussion, knows exactly how much we've just added to the budget. A couple of points that I know many people have actually written to the board about is that we added an assistant AD before budget season. Do we know what other schools have an assistant AD that are in our thing? Because when we look at Bedford, Chappaqua, Somers, Patona, Yorktown, Maia Pack, none of them do. Guess what? They all have a bigger budget than us and they all have a lot more money coming in than we do. We also have a declining, uh, student population, yet we're increasing some of these positions. You have thirty kids in classes. Seventh grade, I've said this six times before, you rob seventh grade to pay sixth grade. And so almost every class in that grade has twenty-eight to thirty kids. When you go into the advanced math class with Ms. Johnson, who's an excellent teacher, half of those kids are not meeting the eighty-five. They all think that they're getting dumped out of that. And I would be quite interested to understand what is the trend of that year over year when you don't have that many kids in a class? I'd also like to understand the survey that you did, all the schools that you utilized. Because when you look at Somers, they have three CSC chairs, but other people chair their meetings. So the assistant principals in the buildings, in Chappaqua, in, in Somers, go and do that. If you have a five oh four, you don't touch special ed. So we're talking about all those elements. The other woman got forty-five extra seconds. I mean, I just, I'm, I couldn't, I couldn't be more floored that we just went and approved all this. When we cut eighteen people, we only added four back. You have huge class sizes and a failed budget last year. It's astonishing to look at.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Chris Paliza. I wasn't planning on talking, but it's interesting to hear talk about not knowing how much things cost just coming on the heels of the residency verification process. It's a little ironic, I think. Also, sometimes when there are staffing needs that are so acute, uh, sometimes they can't wait until the full budgeting process. If the children, the students need additional staffing, that has become so, um, acute and they can't wait for the entire budgeting process, then I think it's the board's responsibility to discuss and vote as you guys did tonight. That's all I can say.
Not one teacher.
You had your time.
And you're being rude, you know?
Okay, thank you, thank you, everyone, thank you.
She's better.
Thank you. Please come up.
My name is Scott Seaman. I just wanted to, um, back up the board for the recognition of the ROTC program and the theater program. I mean, if you've seen the accomplishments they've produced recently, it's incredible. Nice to see recognition and further support of them, especially like Ms. Perdigo, what she's done personally, individually is incredible. And, um, you know, with Commander, I think I'm in okay with my kids, I'm doing a pretty good job. But what I've seen Commander do in just a year or two with my son is incredible. So I appreciate that, uh, the board has continued to support this. One quick question on the report cards. I know it's set for K through five, is there a plan for six through eight and nine through twelve? How that would adapt and how would colleges look at these new report cards? And how would they translate them to, you know, GPA or certain things that the schools look for? Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to make one comment about special ed. Let me tell you, I've seen over the years, even in the summer program, when we bring kids back into the district from the outside placements, they flourish. I'm telling you, I mean, we've had cases where kids in, like, say, Bosse's or someplace like that were sitting there bouncing balls and then came to this district and they're out there working at Green Chimneys. So I kind of support the special ed, you know, anything expert in special ed. You know, because I've seen the results of bringing the kids back.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we will close the public comment portion. And, um, there was one question regarding report cards and anything beyond K-five?
None of the stuff.
None of the stuff, okay. Thank you. Uh, so, um?
A question about class sizes, Mr. Clark could address that. What was the question about class, what, class, um, large class sizes? And Mr. Clark is here.
I did, I did bring some. So I know that there was a concern about the class sizes in, in seventh grade. I just wanted to clarify some of what, how we arrived at those class sizes, because I know it's come up. So we do have a particularly large sixth grade class this year. There were about two hundred and seventy kids coming in. So when we figure out how big our class sizes are going to be, we have to take that number and then we have to divide that number by a number of sections. So if we had two hundred and seventy kids, and we, typically, we would have nine sections per grade. That's what we've historically had. So if we were to take nine sections with two hundred and seventy kids, you're looking at thirty kids per grade in the sixth grade. So what we did have to do, we had two hundred and fourteen or so at the seventh grade level. In order to sort of balance out the classes, we had to create eight sections at the seventh grade level and ten sections at the, uh, sixth grade level. So that's why, um, there are more sections at the sixth grade level than at the seventh grade level. However, the class sizes are all under thirty. Thirty is the maximum, um, class size. In terms of the math program, which I know is a specific concern, we purposely made those sections big. And the reason we did that was because we can only have so many, um, there's only so many spots for advanced math. And everybody wants their children to have that opportunity to be in advanced math. So we try to provide that opportunity to as many kids as we possibly can. So we create large sections, knowing that sometimes kids are not going to make it through the year in those sections. That doesn't mean we don't want to give them the opportunity, though. So we will put thirty kids in those classes, um, but we will explain to them that they have to continue to meet the standard as they go. So I know that there is concern that some kids are not making it, but that's been the case through the years where kids have tried that class and have not made it, um, for whatever reason. They weren't ready for it. So those classes start at thirty, but they don't often end at thirty, and it sort of balances out, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, I don't think we have anything for executive session beyond what we did earlier. Okay, so then, I just need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Carrie, in a second. Diane, in a second. And all those in favor? Six zero.